Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Post Agenda. I'm Bobby Wilson and I represent District One. I'm also Land Use Chair. I'm also on the Parking Authority Board. And at this time, I'm supposed to state that the Post Agenda is for the Pittsburgh Parking Authority and today is Thursday, January 9th, 2025. Would the clerk please read the title of the Post Agenda?
Discussion on the Pittsburgh Parking Authority and others that are related to this matter discuss the current state of the authority, including staffing shortages among the enforcement officers and the consideration of lifting the city residency requirement.
Thank you. And for the record, we are joined by Councilman Coghill. We're also joined by Councilperson Warwick online. And as members join us, I will announce their presence at that time. So at this time, I'd like to, I do have a presentation. I'm not sure if the Parking Authority has one, but I'd like to go over my presentation first. But let's start out with just some introductions before we get started. We'll start, I've already introduced the councilman. Let's start with David.
Dave Onorato, Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority.
Kyle Chenalopoli, I'm the Chief Economic Development Officer for the city.
Devin Talafaro, Talent Acquisition Coordinator with the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service.
Okay, great. And I'm joined by my new legislative aide, Morgan Martin.
Oh, okay. I was wondering who that was. Welcome, Morgan.
Normally introduce the clerk staff, but Louise is here as well. All right, let's, and we're joined by Councilperson Strasburger. And we're about to, we're just about to begin the presentation I put together. So, all right. So obviously, we're here for a Post Agenda. And the reason we're here is to address the state of the Parking Authority, primarily in terms of staffing shortages among enforcement officers and garage attendants. And to explore some actual items and solutions that we could figure out to improve recruitment or retention efforts. So with the establishment of the authority in 1947, you know, council passed an ordinance that gave authorization for the mayor to create the Parking Authority. And the authority's creation was in direct response to, interestingly enough, so much traffic. You know, Pittsburghers often love to think we have a lot of traffic. Back then, I guess it was because everyone had the big boats that they were driving around. But for us these days, it seems a little different. It seems like, you know, we do have a lot of traffic, but a little off topic, but we do have not as many cars parking in the lots, you know. But that was the primary purpose, to increase the safety of our streets and make sure we had a way to accommodate our residents and visitors. So since the establishment, the authority has been committed to those missions. Now with these economic considerations and also the safety concerns, I just wanted to put together a slide on why this matters to city council. Obviously, it's obvious that, you know, we were, you know, going back to 1947, we were pretty instrumental in the Parking Authority's creation. And, you know, realizing that there are staffing shortages and operational efficiency and revenue generation, that is the current state. You know, whether the staffing shortages or, you know, how that impacts the operations and ultimately the funds that, you know, we receive. And I'll get that, get to that. But we have a long history of all this. I mean, I remember the first time I ran for office, just a little side note, we were, the current mayor was exploring selling the Parking Authority to balance out our, to, you know, basically fulfill our requirement to pay the pension. Probably not the best historian on this, but, you know, deep history here. The enforcement officers and the garage attendants contribute to that revenue generation. And looking forward to this discussion today about that. These safety concerns, you know, primarily, you know, obviously, there's safety concerns that were initially taking place back in 1947 when it was created. But, you know, just now, what I see is I know I have a lot of residents that want the Parking Authority to expand so much more than putting tickets on cars, you know, for the meter. They want, in our code, you know, there are several different ways that they can give parking tickets. Parking on sidewalks is a big one that comes up. So these safety concerns that, you know, affect our residents. I mean, when I got in office in 2020, I think about a year into that, we made parking illegal in bike lanes. And so we were looking forward to enforcement there from the Parking Authority. This is a pretty big issue for that, for us in terms of revenue generation, the money that's diverted from the Parking Authority to our general fund and also the pension fund. You can see here that it was upwards of close to 54 million in revenue. And these were some projected numbers for 2025. But historically, you can see how that balances out and obviously helps us balance out, especially in times whenever we're losing tax revenue from other sources like real estate. I think right now, where real estate, I was in a meeting recently where our income taxes are going to surpass our real estate taxes. So not sure if that's the best situation to be in, but definitely Parking Authority plays a big role in us balancing our budget. This, you know, this amount, you can see here, kind of broke it down in terms of where, you know, what goes to the pensions. Now, I will note here that we do make a decent amount of funds from a lot of other parking that happens in the city. Primarily, you know, a big generator is right behind the terminal. I mean, that lot, you know, just in general, we just take that one lot, these private lots, you know, I believe the tax is 35%.
Seven and a half.
Thirty-seven and a half? Okay, thirty-seven and a half, yeah. I'm sitting next to the parking person here. So just, so all these numbers from this page aren't all from the Parking Authority. But just good to know how much revenue generation is from private lots as well. So, you know, obviously, gone over a lot of this. So what we can do today, I think, is just do some fact finding to understand some of the, some of the current strategies of hiring so that we can get to some, like a better place in terms of providing better service to RPP districts, better service to, I know, for instance, East Ohio Street, we have small businesses there, Shady Side, they want to see some turnover in terms of the cars there so that new customers can come in. So to address these staffing shortages and these associated concerns, looking at the staffing gaps, the impact on the small business, like I was going over the public safety and the revenue. So it's pretty timely because the city controllers report that came out in 2024, this performance audit, this was examining the 2022 Parking Authority staffing levels and the posting of the job openings. And so it was interesting, you know, the findings are interesting because, you know, there was some findings in terms of the jobs just weren't being posted. There were some recommendations on the low staffing levels. And at that time, the recommendations from the Parking Authority, to the Parking Authority was to post all the open job positions because obviously, the best way to fill the app, fill the jobs is to post it online. And you can see here that the levels are low. I'm going to obviously give the opportunity for the Parking Authority to talk about the levels and the current levels and historically, you know, what would we need to be at a full staff capacity. But it was just helpful to look at that report. And there was a, there was a response by the Parking Authority. And management, just at the time, you know, this is all here, I believe it was Jody Hart, the financial officer, responded to the, to the, to our controller, Rachel Heiser. And they basically just said that they believe that it was done in December, this audit was done in December. They typically post between January and October. And that these are the places that they, you know, it's just more than their own website. It's Human Resources and, I'm sorry, Human Resources, all posted, Indeed, Glassdoor, LinkUp, ZipRecruiter, and so on. So right now, at this time, I think it's, you know, where I want to open a discussion. I do want to open it to the members, but first I want to go to our David Onorato and then, you know, Kyle, you know, if you have comments as well. I do have my own set of questions, obviously, but I want to make sure that we can get some open discussion first with members. So I think the focus of the conversation piece should be on proven recruitment techniques, enhancing the job posting outreach, develop relationships. You can see that here in the slide. And, you know, I'm a firm believer in increasing wages is the number one way to do it. I think that, you know, as a public entity in the, of the city of Pittsburgh, you know, it's our, the best way that we can keep people in Pittsburgh is to pay them a fairly sustaining wage. And then I have to mention that recently, and this happened at, this happened at our budget hearings, that the, you know, the idea that was brought to us was to, you know, to increase staff would be to remove the city residency requirement for all the Pittsburgh Parking Authority employees. So thank you for listening to my very non-engaging voice. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to David Onorato.
We did receive invite for the Post Agenda today. And out of courtesy for our board member and Councilman Bobby Wilson and the entire city council, that's why we're here today. The authority operates and functions independently from the city and receives no funding from any government agency. The city, we do not fall under the city home rule charter and where most of our roles and regulations and prices are set by our board. Again, out of courtesy, we had this on our resolution last month, the way the residency requirement. The day before the meeting, we received a letter from the entire city council asking us to hold or pull the resolution from the board agenda, which we did. We had an executive discussion with our board members afterwards. It was like the third one we had on this subject. Our goal was to have, it is slated for the January board meeting. It's on the, back on the agenda. Why, as some of the notes that Councilman noted, was for staffing levels retaining and our current employees' garage operations, where we find ourselves significantly short there. And as per union contracts, when a garage is open, union staffs have to be there. So we're raising gates. We're trying to do it strategically when we don't have people. That's letting people out of the garages is free and in the garage is free. We're a 24/7 operation. Same thing with enforcement. I think I've been contacted by the majority of city council for one reason or another, for like the Councilman noted, sidewalk parking, bus lane parking, bike parking, RPP district needs enforced. We have 32 districts of enforcement. If we just enforce RPP every day, we wouldn't have enough officers to do that. So we're always juggling our schedule so that the city, or, you know, it's not in the same place every day. We're trying to cover everything from RPP to meter enforcement, to the signage, to the no parking, bus lanes, bike lanes, and then street cleaning when that comes into effect. Again, I checked with all the five PA Parking Authorities, Philadelphia, Lancaster, Allentown, Reading, and Bethlehem. None of those have a city residency requirement. And just recently, some more reason than others, to my understanding, police, fire, paramedic, school board do not have city residency requirement. And PWSA and Housing Authority, talking to them, they have, do not have that requirement. And again, we're governed by our board and not under the Home Rule Charter.
All right, thank you. And then Kyle, I invited, I just want to know, note that you're the liaison, you can better explain this, but you're the liaison for the mayor's office. And, you know, does the mayor have a position on lifting city residency?
Sure. I mean, I think, yeah, that's an accurate way to characterize, I guess, me as the liaison with Dave. What I would say, you know, as far as residency is concerned specifically, you know, with the city, right, and our employees, we are governed under the Home Rule Charter and that is very clear, except in instances where we are preempted by state law. So our Act 111 unions, right, I think we're all very familiar with that. As far as authorities are concerned, they do not fall under the city charter. And ultimately, that is a decision that their boards need to make. And I would say probably more specifically, are collectively bargaining with their respective unions. And, you know, that's, that's, they don't fall under Act 111 nor do they fall under the Home Rule Charter. So those are things that, and I think in the instances the director Onorato just mentioned, with the Housing Authority or with PWSA, is where that came before those bodies and they made those decisions, you know, as boards for different reasons, at different times, in response to whatever those were. And, you know, those are considerations that management makes in consultation with their board and ultimately in bargaining with their unions.
Are there other authorities other than PWSA that has lifted residency? Because I know PWSA, they had, you know, under, then they were sued by the PUC to do so. Are there any other authorities?
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority, yeah. When did that happen?
I don't know when that happened.
Yeah. Well, I just think it's relevant because, you know, obviously, the obvious thing is that the mayor-
Yeah, we can follow up. I just don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah. So for clarification, the mayor appoint, although it's not charted or anything, the mayor appoints all board members. And we don't, we don't have a vote on that. We do interview though. And so thank you. I also invited Devin Talafaro. And the reason for, you know, inviting our HR department, I had a conversation with Paul Kellerman in terms of just how we were able to successfully hire over 100 DPW workers recently and just trying to understand the strategies that we have. So Devin's here for questions about that. You know, if you want to make an initial comment before I give it to the members.
Yeah, so my role as Town Acquisition Coordinator is to recruit people to come and work for the city of Pittsburgh. So a lot of what we do on our team of three is focused on ways to get job opportunities out to city residents. What I'm finding in the positions that we hire in the $18 to $26 an hour range tend to be a lot of our administrative clerical positions, in terms of DPW, our refuse collection loaders, the co-driver positions, labor positions, those sort of things. So when we are going out to recruitment events, we have a variety of different types of events that we attend, from colleges and university career fairs to community-based events. What we see, a lot of people interested in those particular positions and those pay ranges tend to be at those community level events, people. And some college students that are looking for more entry level. So our administrative clerical positions could be a good opportunity for them to, coming out of college, going into the workforce. So there's a lot of things that we do, and I'm happy to share more in detail, a lot of things that we do to make sure that we are getting the word out, both on the ground, boots on the ground, out in the community, as well as more of those passive recruitment techniques like print and radio advertisement, those sort of things that, you know, kind of go out into the wind and you don't always know who it's hitting and touching. But we do keep track, our team does keep track of all new hires with the city of Pittsburgh and how they hear about positions. And so that's something that we could talk about too and happy to give any input on specific strategies that we do.
I appreciate that. And Dave, I just want to give you an opportunity to respond to the HR claims that we're not posting positions or, you know, the recommendation for that. Because, you know, obviously, one way to get the job is to post it.
No, we've been proactive on it. Our jobs are posted on our website, city website. We go to 35 job shares last year, job fairs. We post on Goodwill, we're a Goodwill Advisory Board member. We post Indeed and all the websites out there and it spreads out. So we're posted all throughout.
And the current ones that we're posting for are the parking enforcement?
Parking enforcement.
How many parking enforcement, just to set the tone of what we're talking about here, how many parking enforcement officers do we expect? Like, should we have on staff?
I believe we should have a parking enforcement officers, 44 officers.
Forty-four, and how many do we have now?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, so we're half. And then garage attendants?
Our 25 budget shows 26 because of Emma filing. We don't want to overstate our expenses. And we're required to file with Emma every year. So we want to have an accurate budget, even though we're showing 26 in there. Prior to 2019 and COVID, we were staff consistently at 44, just for the enforcement officers, to cover all the city, citywide enforcement.
And what about the garage attendants?
Same. Prior to that, we had 53. That's the level we should be at. We're currently at about 33.
Okay, 33.
And again, our budget is, I think, 42 on that for 25 again. So we can justify our budget for Emma filings.
Okay. And how much do garage attendants make starting out and what can they cap out on?
They start out at 1650 and cap out at 2020.
Okay. And then for parking meter enforcement?
They're at 2020 and 2179 for full time, 2020 for part time.
But they start out at 19 and then they cap out at 21?
Yes.
Right, that's, yeah, okay. I was just trying to set the, set that, you know, set those-
And they were negotiated with both unions.
Okay. It's a little uncomfortable because, Morgan, can you go to the next slide? So please, the next slide. So currently on the website, and this is as of, you know, this morning, there is only one garage attendant on the website. And there are no parking meter enforcement people that are on the website. And this is January 9th. And this is in your response to the controller. It states that your high time to recruit is between January and, you know, January and March maybe, or April, to gear up for the, you know, to clean the streets because we ticket people. So I say that maybe it's uncomfortable because I didn't, I didn't expect you to think that there was, the jobs were posted. We even went further and if you can go to the next slide. We've been doing some research. And these are all the postings that you responded or, you know, Jody responded with, the Parking Authority responded in the controller's report on where they're posting. And we found, this is as of, you know, an hour ago, but we've been doing this all week to understand what's going on. So there are no postings for any enforcement officers on any of these websites. And you can see that the positions that are up right now, there's maybe the max, there's two for garage attendants, but we are down 20, like you said. I'm going to open up the members at this point. Or no, I'm sorry, you have any comment on that?
No, they should be up there. I don't know why. Apparently, they're not. I'll correct that when I go back. But first 20 openings, there only has to be one posting because all the jobs are the same. You're not going to see 20 postings of officers. It's just going to be an open posting that everyone will have the opportunity to apply for. You're not going to see the same posting 20 times.
I could get that. But it does actually specify on your website, if you go back to the last, it does actually say for four pit garage.
The garage attendance.
The one, the one attendant for four park garage. So I just want to state, the reason why I'm bringing this up is because, you know, going straight to lifting residency, I think, is, would be a poor decision based on the practices currently that are, that are happening at the, the hiring practices that are happening at the Parking Authority. So I'm going to open up the members as they came in. Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Could I just?
Yeah, yeah, please.
I would disagree with you. Removing residency, a poor decision. It's a first step in to solve our, keep us financially stable and are keeping me in my fiduciary responsibility and making sure the authority stays financially solvent. And with that, that's the first step that would cost us no additional money. Your suggestion, when you threw out at me of raising it $6 as a 30% increase across the board, and I said we'd have to do it for all employees to keep compression in place, that's over a $2.3 million increase that would take effect immediately to our payroll. We passed our budget in November of 2024 for 2026. We met with council, we met with all our board members, and we met with city council at our budget hearings. At no time did it come up that, we did discuss residency and wages. And there wasn't an issue with council back then in November when we was in front of council. So I'm not sure to what changed today that we're up here now, that it's a big issue when it wasn't two months ago, when we did discuss lifting the residency requirement. And my feeling was that somewhere in favor and nobody really showed a disagreement to that. This is just the first step that would be proactive in that. And then in 20, the end of this year, both contracts expire and that's when we'll negotiate with the unions again the wages.
Right.
That would be step two.
No, I understand all that. And the 30% fund balance that the Parking Authority carries is, is pretty, pretty healthy compared to our dwindling 10%.
That's not a fund balance. That's how much money we got to find to pay the employees a 30% increase.
That's what I mean, like you're-
We don't have that.
Gearing up, gearing up for that, 30% fund balance?
No, it's a 30% increase on wages. Where's the, where's that $2.3 million?
The money left, like just like we have, like our emergency funds are 10%, like we have to bylaw, have to hold that. I'm just saying that there is, you know, you're gearing up for negotiations because negotiations are in April.
Will start in July or September, but they're for 2026, it'll take effect.
Yeah, I'm just saying there is, even, even if we take out, it seems to me that there is some, some room for, you know, for wages to be increased since the fund balance is pretty healthy, but-
What fund balance?
Your fund balance.
But that's been approved already by our board. Our revenues all go to the trust and we only get 1/12 of that. Our expenses are already done. We'd have to reopen a budget. We just passed last month and our board, you know, all approved that. There was no issues with that. The wages were stated there with the increases. So I'm not sure why it's coming up now.
Oh, I mean, I'm not a financial expert on fund balances. I was just trying to state that there is, you know, there is a healthier fund balance at the Parking Authority than the city.
Not enough to cover that. Any increase in wages come directly out of our pocket. Any increase in revenues go to the city. So it offsets that. We go in the black, I mean, we go in the red. We want to stay healthy to make sure we can support the city. I believe we're the second or third largest taxpayer to the city. If we go underneath, that's not going to be happening.
Do you believe wages need to be increased for the garage and parking?
We would incur all, no, I don't believe that. At this time.
No, no, I'm saying whenever you go to negotiations.
Yes, that'll be their number one ask. I've been following all the negotiations.
How would we pay for that?
It's not going to be a 30% increase. I won't agree to that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying somehow we're going to have to figure out where-
Like we do every, every year in every negotiation.
Get revenue, yeah. All right, well, you know, I just want to say that the reason why we're here is because, you know, we trust deeply in our controller and our controller did a report, stated what the issue was. We can still continue to see the issue as of today. And that's why we're here.
That'll be corrected, that would be corrected next week. That'll be corrected next week if it's not.
Okay. All right, thanks. I'm going to go to Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for holding us, you know, thank you all for being here. Obviously, you know, I wasn't a Ford or a police or the fire to, you know, move out of the city. But that, well, I guess, let me, let me go back to this. It seems like when I talk to, say, I can't think of exactly what department, but it's always been a challenge to hire somebody, say, for an engineer, okay? And engineers are, you know, far and few between. And I think that, you know, it kind of makes sense for them to go outside the city because it's just, we just don't have the pool here in the city of Pittsburgh. And David, these jobs are from $18 to $26 per hour, right?
We don't go up to 26. Our high right now is 20, $20, $20 and $0.20.
That is $20 is your highest, yeah, yeah. So you actually have-
With full benefits.
Full benefits, yeah, that's good. So you have a hard time finding people who got to work. Is that right? You do all your hiring?
Yes.
Internally, okay. You get no help from us.
That's correct.
So how are you able to hire 100 employees? Right, right. So how are you able to hire a hundred employees for public works within the city limits, probably around the same price, pay scale?
Yeah, um, so our public works employees, I think, are in the ra, more of the range of twenty, if I'm correctly.
Along the same line.
Yeah, slightly more. Um, so it's typically, I mean, we kind of keep a consistent cadence of, you know, how we go about advertising or marketing or putting out job openings with the city. Um, our biggest, probably the thing that we do the most, our biggest, um, time put in would be, um, physical, going to physical events. And entering, acting, job fairs, um, like I said, community events. Uh, we do a lot of partnerships with a lot of the, uh, community organizations, uh, workforce development programs. So you think of like P A Career Links, we have a, a standing commit with them, commitment with them that we do, job information sessions, um, with their participants. Sometimes on a quarterly basis, they have their own job fairs, but then we'll do like, kind of like a session just on City of Pittsburgh careers. Um, so we do that a lot with, um, those workforce development programs, since they have the captured, captured audience of people who are looking and can qualify for those, those types of positions.
Yeah, when you hire, um, say, you know, to go back to what the chairman said about the public works, do you ever hire people from outside the city who then have to move into the city?
Um, I think it can happen. I think.
Typically, you find city residents.
Yeah, typically, they're city, they're already city residents. Um, if I'm honest, most times we find people who are not city residents, who are like really interested in those positions and just are not willing to move into the city. Um, that's probably more of the, um, you know, the types of people that we get that are outside the city. But most, most times, and we actually try specifically to engage, um, with people in spaces who we know, or we know a good portion of those people are city residents.
I'm just trying to figure out how you're successful in hiring people from within the city, around the same pay scale.
Yeah.
And neither job is really a specialty, like an engineer or a doctor, say, per se, but uh, um, you say most of your success is at the job fairs.
We do have, um, yes, because we are at those, we're able to answer questions directly, people who have already applied for positions, who are just kind of looking for direction of the process. Um, but I would say, um, what works really well for us is just building partnerships and relationships with those, um, community organizations and workforce development programs that are already working with job seekers. Um, because I can go in and I can meet with a group of ten people, um, and talk to them directly about those positions. I can answer questions. I go probably a little bit over and beyond, because sometimes I'll, I'll, I'll look at resumes and give recommendations on things, though they might want to tailor their resume, that will better help them, um, with job opportunities. But that's because, you know, that's, my passion is making sure that people have access to the opportunities. Um, if they don't know, then they can't, um, they can't apply. But just that direct interaction and that, um, direct engagement from our team, I think, really helps for people who are already looking, are already interested in, um, employment.
Right, right. And David, you do the same thing. You go to job fairs, right?
So I guess for my clarification, for twenty twenty-four, there were eighty laborers hired for public works.
Eighty, yeah.
Yeah, I think that number is around that number. And, and the, you know, a lot of the positions, not just public works, but, you know, there are administrative clerical positions, so more office-based positions. Um, our animal care control officers, dispatchers, three-one-one call representatives, our recreation leaders. So those positions that aren't necessarily public works related, um, we, um, hired between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four, we hired over five hundred employees in that pay range, in that eighteen to twenty-six um, dollar an hour pay range, which is more than what you said, that, you know, but just in that range.
David, is it safe to say you don't have the resources like we do in the city? Like, do you have three people?
Yeah, we're a team of three.
Working. You don't have a team of three?
We have, we have one in H R.
Okay, so you have.
But we do go to, we attend the.
Yeah, you go to the same practices as they use.
We'd be glad to work with her going forward.
Sure, right, right, right. Um, why is it that you are, have a requirement to live in the city? Was that the way it was just always?
It wasn't when the authority was created, it happened, card pack, and authority was created in nineteen forty-seven. And around nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-five is when our board, at the request of the mayor, I guess, when the city was really thriving with residents and uh, uh, neighborhoods were growing, that he asked that, and I think the political atmosphere was different back then, too. He asked that we, the authority, at that time I wasn't there, that they follow the same practice the city did. And our board honored his request and passed the, uh, resolution to do that. So it hasn't been in effect since the inception of the authority, only since the mid-eighties. And now, due to the different factors, uh, mostly COVID, when it had, you know, we saw a lot of people not return. We're looking to, uh, try to create, uh, an efficient authority, and this is the first step that I see that will not cost us any additional funding.
Right. Um, Cal, I heard you mention, um, you know, although we approve the board, the mayor appoints, or puts them in front of us, and we approve the board.
We, we, we don't approve the board.
We don't approve the board members?
Parking authorities. We're just talking parking authority board.
Yeah, right, 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 okay.
Sorry, I just want to clarify.
So the mayor, though, appoints.
Mayor points the board.
The board, right. How many board members?
There's five.
Five, yeah. Are they, oh, uh, they, they're not required to live in the city, board members?
They are all city residents.
They're all required, but they all do.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Are you a board member? No, you can't be, right?
Well, de facto, assistance.
You're the boss, but you're not allowed to be a board member, right?
The board members, Liz Fishback is the chair, um, Councilman Wilson's the vice chair.
Sure.
I can't remember.
Oh, yeah, you're on the board.
Kim Lucas is, is treasurer, then Bob Palmasina.
And Sean Luther.
And Sean Luther.
Ah, I see, I see. So if, um, the board decides, you have a vote on that, then you're, you're one of five votes there. Okay, okay. Cal, um, I heard you address it, but, um, where is the mayor on this?
Ultimately, it's a decision of the board.
Right, so he's gonna leave it in the hands of the board, which he appointed?
It's ultimately a decision of the board.
Of course, of course, but do you care to elaborate? Does he? Does it matter to him either way, how this goes, or obviously, it's the decision of the board.
Yeah, it's ultimately a decision of the board.
What are his personal feelings about it? Can you speak to that?
He, I, you would have to ask the mayor what his personal feelings are.
Okay. Okay, so, um, yeah, obviously, we want to see, you know, jobs going to the City of Pittsburgh. But I understand the problem you have. I mean, I've seen it in other departments and other industries even.
We would give preference to city residents first.
Yeah, right.
In, uh, all applications and interviews and that. We would have policies to have that in place.
Yeah, because you're down a significant number.
Yes.
Over sixty people, would you say?
I think it's closer to forty.
Forty, yeah, right, 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 right. And, um, yeah, it's a it's tough to, it's, I don't know, people, I don't, I don't think people want to work today, I guess. I don't know what it is. It's hard. Right, right, right. Well, I appreciate the chairman trying to find a way or a solution, whether it's higher wages that we all can come to. Obviously, this council has no authority in that, um, you know, I, we're just here, I guess, for Councilman Wilson and trying to figure out, uh, a better way or, you know, a way we could keep the employees from the City of Pittsburgh. So I would be open to anything of that. Understand your problem, too. I mean, it's a tough issue. Unrelated, I just wanted to ask you, the, the garage down at the prison? Is that? The, the garage that we own, yeah. What's, what's First Avenue?
First Avenue.
First Avenue, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that seems to be, uh, busy gar, busy garage, is that right? Is that a, is that a moneymaker, that one?
Well, they're all making money now. Uh, system-wide, we're at, uh, about seventy-three percent utilization, where we used to be at ninety-eight. Uh, when I used to, uh, pull in in the morning or go at night, that roof used to be filled. That roof's still not filling up here. It's a fourteen-hundred space garage, so, but it does well, yeah. It's, um, it's large.
Right, um, and you're back up to pre-pandemic levels, you think?
No, we're still six million dollars short of what our revenues used to be, uh, prior to, uh, COVID.
Right. So you're budgeted, if you could find the people that wanted to come to work for you, you have it in your budget for forty?
For twenty-five, we have, uh, uh, thirteen open positions we could fill this year, and we would budget more if we seen it. I would like the levels to be what they were, uh, pre-pandemic, but again, due to the Emma requirement, we didn't want to overstate our expenses. So we, we put a realistic number in there, what we thought we could achieve this year in, uh, filling those positions.
Okay. Well, you know what, um, that's, that's really it for me, Mr. Chair. I'm really here to just absorb and listen and any which way I can be helpful to the chairman. Uh, I'm there, and hopefully, we can come to a conclusion where it works for you and works for the City of Pittsburgh. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, Councilperson Strasburg?
Thank you. I don't think there's too much to add. I am certainly in favor of, um, you know, an all-of-the-above approach to, um, increasing the number of people applying and being hired, and that's for obvious reasons. I want to see great service delivered to our residents. I want to see, you know, when I get a call about, um, people paying for our P P permit, that they are getting the service that they request. Um, and as we know, it's like a double, double sort of, in a good way, a double whammy of, of revenue, if we are enforcing meters or enforcing RP, well, especially meters. If we're enforcing R P P, we're both training people that they need to pay the meter. And we are, um, you know, getting, getting the, uh, unfortunately, them paying the ticket means revenue in. So I know that balances out after people start to actually adhere to it and, and pay for it, but, um, it, it means additional revenue. So I, I'm, I'm all for it for all the reasons, but mostly to just deliver great service for the people of the City of Pittsburgh. And, um, you know, this has been helpful. I, I guess it didn't, I didn't consider the fact that raising wages isn't just raising wages for a subset of employees, that there has to be some sort of parity there. I will be highly unpopular if this goes viral, but, um, I, I, I still maintain that our parking meter rates are just, they're always historically low. They probably could be raised a little bit. So I want to say, like, I don't, I, I would say, you know, from my perspective, you don't have to agree that, you know, increasing those is always an option. Um, they're still probably going to be less than market rate or what others, what others, um, charge. But, um, and, and garages as well, but, um, I know we're proud to keep that, that level low. But, uh, I, I do, um, uh, I, I do want to make sure that, you know, we're not just pulling one lever because it seems convenient or easy or whatever, that all options are, are being considered here. So, um, thank you for, you know, raising this issue, allowing us to have a conversation about it above and beyond what we discussed at the budget hearing. And, um, I'll leave it at that.
You're correct, uh, enforcement does drive up compliance. That's why you need enforcement.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Thank you, Councilperson. And Councilperson Warwick, I apologize, you were the second, and I, just being online, sometimes I fail to, to recognize that.
No, no, that's fine, no worries. Uh, yeah, sorry that I couldn't be there in person. Um, yeah, I, I would say, uh, definitely to echo, uh, Councilwoman Strasburg's remark. I mean, one thing I always like to remind people is that, you know, um, the storing your car on a city street is, is, is not a right, right? It's a, it's something that you pay, right? If you store your car in a garage, if you store your car in a, you know, if you build a parking pad on your own property, whatever you do, right, like there is a cost to owning a car, and certainly a cost to owning more than one car, or there, there should be, right? Like, it is the, the, you know, the city is for people, it's not for cars, and, um, parking is a big part of that. So I just, so this, I, you know, the, I, I feel as well that we could, um, uh, raise our rates in, you know, places. I know that's perhaps an unpopular opinion, but, um, I, I think that is certainly something to consider. I know, uh, Chief, that we have, um, talked about, uh, adjustments, you know, that, that we, that we are raising the rates in the, for the parking permits, and, um, and, you know, we've talked about ways to limit the amount of cars that you can, you know, that you can have permits for, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so, yeah, so any, any ways to, to raise revenue, uh, through enforcement, et cetera, but of course, you need the staff. I mean, as far as the, um, you know, I'm, I'm very interested in workforce development, uh, and, you know, I, I do. I understand the, the predicament that you're in, right? Because as, as it becomes more and more expensive to live in Pittsburgh, it becomes, uh, less and less feasible to earn, you know, fifteen, you know, I, I can't remember the starting wages, around fifteen an hour, sixteen an hour. You know, it becomes less and less feasible to live in the city and, you know, living on that wage, unless you are, you know, a young person, living at home, et cetera. Um, but as, as we know, and this is something that, you know, that, that that all sort of career-level, you know, union-level, sort of more long-term style employment, you know, you're always competing. I say this all the time, you're always competing with Target, right? You're always competing with Panera, where you can just walk in and get a job, right? And maybe it's a couple dollars less, you know, but it's, it's easy. And it's like you just fill out an application and you basically start working almo, almost right away, right? So, you know, and, um, and I know that, that certainly government jobs are, are a little harder to, to fill than that. It can take a little bit more time. Um, but, uh, yeah, I mean, again, I, I, I I understand the predicament that you're in. Um, I, I also, I like the idea of, of, you know, people in Pittsburgh uh, working for our Pittsburgh government agencies. I think that makes sense. I understand that, and I would like to see wages increased. So if, if there was a way to kind of increase the amount of revenue, then in order to also increase the wages, that would be great, because I, I do kind of feel like these days, for, I mean, you know, even working in a garage, right, my understanding, uh, is that you, you need a driver's license, right? Because you may have to move a car. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, so already, there's a sort of, I mean, it, it doesn't sound, but that is actually a, a, a pretty significant barrier. But it's also a barrier for lots of people living in, right, so that even the people who are in Pittsburgh, you know, who could be, you know, that, that driver's license issue is huge. And of course, I, I think that, you know, as a city, this isn't in relation necessarily to Parking Authority, but, you know, I would love to see us, as a city, and all of our many, many, many workforce development partners, uh, really sit down and tackle that issue of driver's licenses, right? So that our kids, uh, coming out of P P S, or, you know, whether they're getting that, getting that driver's license training in school, or whether they, they're able to get it quickly when they get out of school, just to make sure they have that license that makes them, that makes their job search a lot easier. I know, uh, Devon, and I, you know, I send people to Devon all the time, where, so, you know, um, yeah. I, it, it's, it's a tough one. I, I, you know, I, I, I feel your pain, but at the same time, I am definitely, uh, you know, in agreement that it is nice, you know, I, I would like to see Pittsburgh employing Pittsburghers, right? Um, uh, just as, as a general rule of thumb. So, um, at any rate, uh, thanks for, for being here. And, uh, I guess, I don't, if you have any comment on that, I don't know, but that's sort of just my thoughts.
No, thank you. Uh, I would just add that driver license requirements also in place for the enforcement officers who have to take out vehicles.
Oh, right, of course, yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense. So, you know, already, so, again, though, but, but, you know, to, to Councilman Wilson's point about that, you know, when you're starting, what was it again? Was it sixteen-something?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, sixteen an hour, and you need a driver's license, that's like, right, like that, there, there, there's a lot of jobs that are a lot, a lot, was, all job, you know, I, there are a lot of jobs that are certainly easier to get, right, quicker to get, more flexible, that type of thing, you know what I mean? Just like you can walk in, fill out an application where you are earning just about that, it's very close to that same level where, you know, you don't, you don't need that driver's license, you don't, you know, it's just maybe a little bit easier to get. But these are actually, you know, I got a, I got a ticket today for illegal parking, for both. But, um, you know, those are, they're skilled jobs, and you're also dealing with the public and, you know, potentially grouchy people and, and whatnot. It's, it's not, it's not an easy job. You're out in the cold, right, like, or you're out in the heat. Um, so it is, uh, I, I could see how you might want to be, you know, see a little bit higher hourly wage, just starting for the, for the type of work that it is, so. Anyway, all right, well, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson, and, uh, I just want to quickly add that, you know, although we couldn't find any applications available for parking meter enforcement people on the, the current website or the internet, we did find, uh, an application in the basement of the, the internet. an application in the basement of the the internet interwebs, one from twenty thirteen. And in the job description, it says, must be able to withstand verbal abuse. I mean, on the south side, you could speak to, I mean, I'm gonna go to Councilman Charlin, but I mean, these are the officers that would walk with them. So, Councilman Charlin?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Maybe after this, you can draw me a map for where the basement of the internet is.
I just made that up. I, I'm really trying to figure out how the internet holds so much information for some.
So, thank you. You know, and thank you for being here. Obviously, the Parking Authority is wildly important to my district. The Parking Enhancement District has been really one of the bright spots that's, we've been able to work, one of the more innovative thoughts that have happened in the city and something that I think other council members are starting to to buy into and and steal, which is is good. But, you know, in order for innovative things like the Parking Enhancement District to function, and frankly, like, I I know that there was a whole slew of shoeistas that used to roam this, this building and people that were really like bought into the free cost, or the high cost of free parking and all of Donald Chup's theories. I I think that, like, we need to be expecting that our departments are having innovative thought and trying to be not just industry leaders in terms of of showing up and punching the clock, but industry leaders in terms of like, what are the new exciting things that are, the new exciting trends that are happening? And that can only happen with a, with a strong workforce. So I, I'm, you know, I think you characterized in our budget briefing earlier that removing residency wasn't an issue for this council. I I don't think that I felt that way when, when you came to talk to us. I, like, in fact, I know that I didn't. I was more like, I gassed that twenty-one dollars an hour was where we top out. And I just, I don't, I, I don't think I had realized that we, that is where our ceiling was for, for employees there. I understand if, if maybe that's the entry level. And to, you know, to Councilwoman Warwick's point, I'm, I'm sitting here looking up like what entry level positions are for Target at twenty-four dollars an hour, and GetGo, which is eighteen, and an Aldi, which is seventeen. But I I'm, like, the idea that you can't make more than twenty-one dollars an hour, and we're gonna expect you to have this job as your career, like, that, that's, I, I just, I don't see how that that works.
I understand your thought there, but the, I don't know if that's a fair comparison. I'm not sure those other jobs you're talking about have health benefits. We have a Cadillac Health benefit that Authority pays for. It probably doubles our salary there. We also have a defined benefit plan for the Ask Me employees. So I believe they're just getting a salary there, and they're not paying for healthcare, they're not paying for pension at those other jobs. Our salary, our healthcare alone for a family of the officers, I believe we're paying twenty-eight thousand dollars a year for them for healthcare, on top of their salary, and then we contribute to their pension too. So, we gotta make sure that when we're comparing those fast food jobs and Target jobs and that, that they have benefits and healthcare too. To be a fair comparison. We could take away the healthcare rate, double our salaries.
To, to be fair, I I didn't, I I didn't look to see what the rest of the benefits package is for, for all those jobs. I do know GetGo, you know, does have benefits. I I I do know that for sure. But I I do, I can't speak for for Target or Aldi, for the other groups that I look into. Actually, it was raised on GetGo benefits. That's how my, my father insured the family, so.
And I'm sure we'll address the wages negotiation. Both contracts expire the end of this year.
So, I think that's one of the, one of the points that I I wanted to talk about is, I don't, why is it that you're willing to remove the residency requirement before the contract negotiations happen, but you're not willing to look at expanding wages before the contract negotiations happen? Why, why is that the first move?
It's a non-financial cost to the Authority, and we're not opening up the contract to negotiate and, well, set a new wage, and I don't have to reopen the budget that was just passed in November with the wages that were in there approved by the board. I mean, it would look, I, I I personally don't think it's a good idea to reopen the budget, and I don't think from its Authority's financial responsibility, it's the right thing to do at the time. We've negotiated all these rates four years ago in good faith with the union. At that time, they were good rates. And that's why there's a term on the contract, and we'll set that up and look at it again. I've been watching the other contracts that have been negotiating and have been signing, and I see most of them are getting significant increases compared to what they used to get in past negotiations. So we're preparing ourselves for that.
I guess, I I can see that it's definitely the easier move would be to lift residency because there wouldn't be a financial constraint. I don't know that it's the better move.
I think it's the first move, and it is a better move, in my opinion, because it it may solve the problem. Neither one is guaranteed to solve the problem, but this is the first step to try to solve the problem. If it don't work, then we try to address it through wages in negotiations.
Have we ever had an employee or a potential employee reach out to the Parking Authority and say, I, I want to be, I want to work as a parking enforcement agent, but I live in Homestead and I just, I just can't, I mean.
Yeah, we had five just recently, within the last six months. And over the last year, we had, I believe it's eighty-five application just said, because we first tell them about the city residency sire, and it's the deal killer, and they say, no, we don't have to go no further. They stopped the conversation right there.
I, I, yeah, I'm sorry, I just, I find that so hard to believe that.
They're not gonna move into the city for these jobs.
For these wages. I mean, you have to move into the city and you have to, it, it's expensive to live in the city. As we, we spend a lot, a lot of time here talking about our residency, our, our housing policies and, and the cost of housing here in the city. It, it's very expensive.
The other issue too with the cost of the, living in a city is the school board. A lot of young families leave the city for the school and not per se the city. So we may have some, we probably go out a potential six to nine people considering leaving their position because their children are getting school age.
Sure, I I understand that and, you know, recognize that we're in front of Devon here as well. But, but, you know, but, but Devon, to your point, like, you've, you've been able to hire all these Public Works employees who also have all the same challenges that you're describing. I mean, correct?
Um, I mean, yes. So, so we've been able to hire a number of employees in the, in the pay range of what, what you're working with in a variety of different types of positions. I think that what I see, and and when I engage and interact with, with job seekers, you know, you mentioned, you know, hiring at things like Target or GetGo or Panera Bread, as Councilwoman Warwick mentioned, but I think that the, the real competitor in, in job opportunity is remote work. So if I can make more money in my home and maybe even still get benefits or have access to benefits in my home, I don't have much of a sent, an incentive to leave my house and go and work and then in an environment where you're mostly outdoors or you're in an environment that, you know, when the weather is a factor, is, you know, can be problematic. So I think those things tend to be the, the real barriers, and it's a barrier for us in hiring for, for city employees as well. But I think you also have to make the opportunities attractive and identify what those incentives can be. So what we, what we found this past year in tracking the numbers of, of new hires, overall, the city hired three hundred and ninety-six people in twenty twenty-four. We asked the question, where did you hear about this position? The majority of the, the people actually cited word of mouth and employee. So your own, the people who, who work for you are the tellers of other people to come and work here. If they don't have job satisfaction, then they're not probably gonna tell too many people to come and work here. And then also, like, where you're seeing the position. So a lot of what strategy, what we do in recruitment is making sure that we are visible in multiple different markets. If you're not visible, then people can't find the jobs, you know, job opportunities that do exist. So I think just being able to be in the places, in the spaces where job seekers are is important, but also being visible in the spaces where you are not can, can help. Those are small gains. It may not, you know, get you fully staffed, but it could get you half of, half of the half staff, you know, where, where you're down. Could, it could, it could be helpful, but.
Yeah, and I, I, I very much appreciate that. It sounds like there's, well, let me just say this. It, is it possible, especially, you know, as we talk through our co-op agreements and things like that, that our H R department can do hiring or recruiting for the Parking Authority? Is there a way that we can make that a thing that we look at? I, I know right now that would not be something that would be appropriate, but is that an option for us?
I mean, I don't know if we can do it, you could do the hiring for us, but we'd be willing to.
Recruitment?
Yeah, train with them and go to different seminars that we go to, the job fairs and that. And, you know, when we have a posting, we'll share it with them, have them post it where they post it. We can assist each other in hiring practices, I'm sure of that.
I, I think like, one of the things that I think of is like, so let's say somebody applies to be a laborer and ends up deciding that, that that's not, maybe not right for them. Is there a way that our H R department can say, actually, have you, have you considered the Parking Authority? Something that, like, those kind of things.
We've, I think we've reached out to the city already for referrals on our board. We're, even through referrals, we're not getting many.
Yeah.
It's a great, it's a great recommendation, opportunity we could take advantage of.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I, in my mind, the lifting the residency requirement is a, has to be the last step that we take. It might be the easiest step, but it, it, like, I want to get residency back from the Act, Act one eleven bargaining groups, like, I don't, I don't want to see more and more groups become, you know, or exempt from the, the residency requirement. I think it's, it's important. We should have our employees serving the neighborhoods that they live in and also paying our wage taxes and, and paying, you know, for all of the things that that, that we love about the city. Like, they should be part of this. They should have buy-in in, in the city. I think it's in my mind, it should be something we, we, we do last. I, I really think, though, like, if, if the twenty-one dollars an hour is what we're maxing out, that's not a career. Like, that's, it's just, it's hard to believe that that's a career for, 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 I, I mean, no young people are gonna say that's a career at this point, like.
Most of our employees now, once they get past probation period, they're there, they're probably all senior employees with ten. Most, both unions, especially the garage attendants, there's probably twenty-five percent of them are retirement eligibility next year. So that's another factor we're considering. It's gonna ramp up, be more critical issue going forward, especially in the garages too, because they're, they need man when they're open, or we're gonna lose significant revenue going forward, and that just funnels our resources to the city.
I, I think it's incumbent upon us, though, as the, the city, like, we need to be the leader in this space. We, we need to, we need to show other employers that you can give, like, life-sustaining, career-sustaining, family-sustaining wages. Because for twenty-one dollars an hour works out to be about forty-two thousand a year.
Correct.
That's sixty percent A M I. That, that's a, you know, a little bit too much to make, to benefit from, from our affordable housing programs. Not a whole lot of subsized housing in, in that point. You're really in that, you know, in the, the rough spot where housing is, is pretty unattainable for you in the city. It's, we, we deserve to do better by our employees. We deserve to, to, to lead. And this is an opportunity where the city is not just the rulemaker, but we actually are an employer here. And, and I know you're not actually part of the city, but you know, you are, and
I think there are a lot of jobs too that are there. There's, they're, they're the second job in a household, even though they're getting that salary of forty-two thousand. They all have the ability to loop out of the healthcare, but they're all taking that. So I think I agree with you. It's very expensive to live in a city, and probably most households today need two incomes. This isn't a, probably a single income, but there, this is the second income, and we provide the benefits for the families that have that. I would disagree that it should be the last move. Again, we've been considering this for several years now, ever since COVID. Everything's have changed, as noted, the workforce change, remote working, you know, we had a change. We are recognized across the country and even internationally for what we're doing at the Parking Authority, not just for being a place to work, but, you know, we're, we're following technology. We're the first to bring pay-by-play to the country. We're the first U S city to implement ticket by mail on streets. So we're leading the way in technology, and a lot of cities are looking at us as what we're doing in technology. So we are being recognized across the country and, and internationally with the International Parking Institute. They're always calling us. Chicago just came to visit us to see our operations and how we're got the legislation strange for ticket by mail, and New York wants to come and see us. So we are recognized as a top organization just for different reasons you're stating. I don't believe that if we lift the residency requirement, we're gonna have a mass exited from our organization. We may have a handful, but I don't believe that mass exit is gonna be our employees who, like you said, they're, they've established, they're been employed by us for over fifteen years. They've been living there. They're gonna stay there. It's bringing in new people right now and trying to head off the early, the retirements that are occurring in the next two years. If our funding goes on, that's less money we can give to the city, and then we're gonna have more issues than just.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, if we're an industry leader and all those other things, I, I would hope that we could be an industry leader and as an employer. And.
Well, I think that's part of us. That's what, people do stay on us.
Are other parking authorities paying their top enforcement agents sixty percent A M I?
I would believe, I don't have that information, but I can get that. I would believe we're competitive on the wages.
All right. Yeah, I just, i- if that is the case, I think that we can, we can still do better, but I, again, would, I, I hope we can think of other options before we actually come to lifting the residency requirement here. So.
Well, it is slated for the agenda next week.
Okay. Thank you.
They would qualify for, if they had, you know, a couple of children, they would qualify for I Z. Because the sixty percent A M I would look up, yeah. Uh, Councilperson, Councilman Mosley?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. And thank everyone for, for coming this afternoon. You know, I've, I've, I've a couple of questions. And then I do want to, you know, echo Councilperson Charlin's, you know, concerns around, you know, you know, the residency requirement, just from a philosophical standpoint. You know, I'm, I'm generally a supporter of the residency requirement and would, you know, wish that, you know, our teachers and our, you know, our, our, our police force as well, you know, we're still, you know, forced to live in the city, but also understanding you know, how much our city has changed dramatically over the last fifteen years as far as the cost of, of living. You know, you know, within the city does, you know, make me, you know, give me some positive, you know, you know, would generally, you know, for me is a, you know, very strong opinion about the residency requirement. So I do, you know, understand that, you know, given how much more expensive it is to live in our city than it was fifteen years ago. You know, that is something that should be taken account, which also then raises Councilperson Charlin's point about, you know, the, you know, the raising of wages you know, and, and becoming, you know, more competitive. You know, one thing I, I would, I would like to, you know, talk about, and I, and I mentioned it, you know, during, you know, the budget hearing, you know, is looking at, you know, potentially, you know, expanding, you know, the Public Service Academy over at Westinghouse, you know, beyond EMS, and, you know, police and fire, and thinking about, you know, the Parking Authority. And I think that particularly, you know, in that age group, you know, I think that, you know, the, the current wage rate is, I think, more attractive for folks coming right out of high school, or even college students looking for, you know, part-time employment. Excuse me, which raises my, you know, my initial question. Is there like a, you know, at, at, for the sake of over, you know, simplifying, is there a, a kind of a general profile? at, at, for the sake of over, you know, simplifying, is there a, a kind of a general profile, you know, of, um, you know, whether it's a meter enforcer or, you know, a, a garage attendant as far as like age, you know, family status, like side of town they come from, you know, is there a kind of a general profile? You know, for someone who kind of gets through the entire process and becomes an employee at the parking authority?
When will we answer that now? Uh, all I know can state is once it gets through to probation, uh, they're, they're usually there for the long run then.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, and, um, and, and I know you're, you know, very active. I forget the name of the International Trade Association. I believe you were the media past president or your current president of?
Current past chair.
Right, uh, and what's the name of that organization again?
International Parking Mobility Institute.
Right, right. Absolutely. And congratulations on, you know, having the support, you know, of your colleagues around the country, um. You know, are the, are your like best practices that you're seeing, uh, you know, from, you know, other, uh, you know, similar authorities and in, in our authorities across the country, like many other, uh, you know, institutions that we've have in this country post pandemic, kind of, uh, having the same challenges as far as, um, you know, bringing in recruits and, 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 um, and having, you know, the level of workforce that would be optimal.
I don't know if they're having recruitment issues. They're having the same, uh, concerns and issues about, uh, utilization coming back to what it was pre-pandemic with the remotes, mostly due to the remote working, uh, forces and the number of leases in the garages, especially dropping off across the country.
Right, okay. And, um, and, and, and I think you alluded to it, but if you could give just a ballpark figure, particularly post pandemic of, of, and it doesn't have to be obviously, you know, to the letter, um, you know, how, how many recruits do you think you lose per year because of the residency requirement?
Well, last year, I don't know if it was completed last year. Last year was eighty.
Okay. And, and do you think that was similar to the year before, you know, as like going year to year post pandemic?
Yeah, I didn't go back and track it. I mean, I didn't check on it going backwards, but we can see how far the records go back.
And do, do you feel like that is the, the primary, you, you feel as though that's the, the primary, uh, obstacle? Um, as far as maintaining an optimal level of workforce is the, is the residency requirement versus the pay rate?
Yes.
And, 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 um, and is there any like other things that you could pull from that makes you feel so strongly about that, you know, you know, beyond the, the eighty-five people? Is there, um, like feedback that you get, you know, during the process?
Just talking to people. That's, you know, they don't want to, uh, they're interested in a job. They don't want to move into the city and some of the city residents that have it was like they brought to the attention. They don't have driver's license. They can't apply for it then, but, uh, I just think throwing money at it, it's not just the, the sole answer. It may be part of the answer. Uh, we could do one, we could do the other one. I'm not, I can't guarantee either one would get us where we want, but we can't just sit here and do nothing. I think that'd be the worst thing to do.
Right, right. And I can appreciate that. And, um, and, and, and my other question is, uh, because we, we had talked about, you know, um, the garages and you said they're at seventy-three percent. And obviously, um, the, the meter enforcer workforce is at fifty percent. You know, uh, like, how much of this, uh, post pandemic revenue shortage would you contribute to the loss of garage revenue due to less commuters coming to the city because of people, you know, are, are working remotely versus, um, the shortage of revenue that is derived from, uh, the shortage of enforcement officers? You know, how do you, how do you kind of balance?
Say eighty percent is due to the garages.
Okay. Interesting, interesting, interesting. Okay, um, I, I think that's, um, you know, exhausts my questions. I appreciate you coming and looking forward to, you know, having more robust, you know, your conversations about this issue.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I wanted to just follow up with some of the discussion that I was listening here, so. I really appreciate everyone engaging and, um, Dave, I appreciate you answering the questions, Kyle and Devin. Appreciate everything that you're doing, uh, for the city. Make sure that, you know, that you're going out through, I mean, we have those, what are those recruitment centers called in our neighborhood?
The Neighborhood Employment Center. So there's about six, I believe, across the city.
Is the parking authority connected to that? Okay, it'd be good to connect the parking authority because I, every year comes up where we see the budget line item and I think we all go, wait, how many jobs are we, uh, filling at these employment centers that we pay for at the city? So I think that'd be a great opportunity and that's kind of where I want to get here. I know, I realize that, um, you know, there is an agenda and David seems, um, like you're pretty adamant on putting that agenda on, on our board agenda, um, next week. Um, I do, you know, obviously I'm never going to be silent on this issue because I do, you know, you know me. I'm always trying to increase wages and give people a better pay. And, uh, so I'll, you know, I'll continue on that note, but I, I just think my, my tune has changed on this that, you know, if we're not posting the job, um, how do we have the conversation? So I'm trying to have that conversation about this to control or found it. We found it this week. I didn't expect to find it. Uh, I was quite, quite blown away. But, uh, you know, it'd be great to dive into that. Like how do people, you know, know there is a job, like these job fairs that we're doing, like, I was hoping the HR person might be here, but maybe you have the numbers. Like do we have numbers on turnover? Do we have like exit interviews, why they don't, um, want to be at the job anymore?
For the turnovers, once they get through provo- probation period, which is probably eighty percent of them, they're usually there for the long haul and they get a retirement out of there. Uh, there's, yeah, I mean, city residency requirements, one, uh.
I'm sorry, you're saying you do have numbers on?
People that, you know, set up interviews and don't come forward for the interviews. They accept jobs. They don't show up the first day. There's all kind of, and you can't get exit interviews out of everyone. Some, you know, usually when someone retires, we have an announcement at the meeting. If it's been a long years, you can see that we don't have great turnover. We're going to have not the issue with turnover, but the issue with retirement coming up in the next year. Not that it's turnover, but their retirement age and they're going to be, we anticipate a lot of people leaving due to that.
But if we're not posting the job, where do people know to get the job?
But we are posting there on Indeed or through everywhere. I'll have our HR guy send you where they're posted.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, you know, in terms of, I mean, that's kind of what I want to, I mean, I understand you're going to send it over. I'm just.
But we worked hard.
I'm just trying to understand like how someone would, you know, apply for the job. Like, so, so you're aware that we're posting on the website, but not currently, but what they, that's how we get our applications. Right?
Your tiny city?
Yeah. No, 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 the parking authority. The, for the meter enforcement people.
Yes, and we go through Indeed and they spread it out through the thing. And then we reach out and go to the, we went to thirty-five, uh, job fairs last year.
Okay, thirty-five job fairs?
Yes.
Okay, maybe that's where it's happening. Um, in terms of job fairs. And so that's why I would like hoping we could pick through here. I know we've been discussing this at the parking authority for a couple of years now, but it's risen to a level of, um, you know, we got together, council understood that, you know, it seems like uh, there's a very hands-off approach, um, you know, um, in terms of, uh, you know, trusting the board members in terms of coming from the mayor's office. So, you know, there is this, um, you know, full, you know, competency that we're, we're, we're entrusting in the authority to, to manage this. And so as a councilperson, you know, I, I did see some, you know, some, I, you know, some ideas of, of how we could figure this out. And, um, I think I was asked recently at a, um, uh, on a phone call and I was asked, well, why now? Um, you know, by, you know, someone, uh, in, in terms of, in terms of this. And I was like, because this is important. You know, it's important. We pay people a better wage. Um, I'm asked staying with Councilperson Sharland's asking like, why? You know, if we're going to get something out of a contract, and I know, you know, you like to negotiate, if we're going to get something out of the contract, why not keep the residency for, you know, negotiations?
There's more than just the contract and the funding. It's our agreements between us and the city too. You've got to look at everything. You can't just look at one piece and say, you know, give them a thirty percent raise. That money's not there to do that.
But we'll have to put it there. I mean,
How?
We could raise rates. I mean, I'm just saying. Must have, must have, uh, a plan to fund more. So you're saying we don't, you plan to go and, and, and not raise rates? I mean, we're all talking about here about how, you know, um, I mean, there's inclusionary zoning bills at the planning commission right now that will make it's like, if that would pass, it would make it so that people that are living at fifty percent AMI, uh, would be given an opportunity to live in, you know, a building that, you know, any building that would be built, you know, it's more, that has more than twenty units. So like, we're saying, like, are you saying that we would continue down the path of, uh, keeping people at a certain percent AMI and they might actually have an opportunity to live in housing that we're literally debating weekly here at the council table?
Choice. Sure, during union negotiations, there's going to be rate increase, uh, wage increases. There's no rate increases for this year. Our garages aren't full now. I mean, a simple philosophy in the industry is if you're under ninety percent utilization, you raise your rates, you're going to go lower. You mean, you, you, we should be lowering our rates because of the utilization process. You know, we can look at raising street meters, but that's going to, at one point it's going to have a negative effect.
You were saying we can't pay for it. My question was, you can't, saying we can't pay for it. But we are going into negotiations. We do, do you realize that the, the pay is low? That that is a big, the biggest contributing factor to not, not filling these positions?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. I don't know where we go from here because I, I think that's, I don't think we're going to solve the problem with lifting residency, but I can be proved wrong. I'm only one, one person in the city of Pittsburgh, but I'm, you know, I'm looking forward to any sort of partnership we can get. Kyle, I'm not sure if, you know, if you can offer that, you know, that partnership between the city and the parking authority to figure out if we can figure out some HR strategies before we lift residency?
I think I can have our HR contact them directly and work something out.
You want to facilitate something that would, or Dave, are you willing to facilitate something, um, that will be meaningful, uh, to try first before lifting, lifting the residency?
No, I think we've been waiting too long. We can do them together.
Okay. All right. Well, I look forward to, um, next week's vote then. Uh, it seemed pretty confident that, um, this will be, um, addressed next week. And so looking forward to that because, you know, regardless, you know, I want to make sure that, um, you know, we're getting to a place where we're incre- this post agenda was about increasing staffing. And so the goal will be to increase staffs or fully staffed so we can get to, uh, more, not only the, the current streets that we have, uh, to, you know, to, to put fine, to make sure that parking is happening appropriately. And if it doesn't, I guess there's fine, you know, there's a ticket that they put on the windshield. You know, a lot of different, um, PP, uh, you know, a lot of different permanent parking districts. And, um, I know people have pet, uh, you know, parking enhancement districts. There's a few down the line that are coming, uh, you know, in particular downtown and, uh, and also other things that happen in our right of way, uh, like illegal parking that in the short, in the times of short staffing, um, at, uh, certain zones, you know, our officers just can't get to ticketing that we have authorization to do through the parking, with, with the parking, um, in, in enforcement officer. So. All right. Well, with that, we're going to end this post agenda. Do you have any comments?
Uh, just real quick. I just wanted to know. I just wanted to know, so if your board votes to lift the residency, is that effective immediately then? Or is it?
Yes.
Okay, because you don't need counsel, you don't need approval, just the board's approval. Okay, that, that was it.
And I would agree with most of the statements made today that, uh, we do need to be fully staffed to address all the issues and concerns and enforcement out there. We get calls from most of the offices about issues we don't see sometimes, but sometimes we know, but we don't have staff to cover. We want to be able to address all of them from the different types of enforcement. And I would agree, one thing, one, one action is not going to solve the problem. It's going to be several things at the thing. And this is in my mind, just the first step on the way to doing that. It's not going to solve the problem completely, but it's this first step in doing that. The next one may be the, the wages, but there may be something else that comes up between that, between this and the negotiation if the board passes it that we do too prior to, uh, negotiating with the, uh, unions.
Right. I think you do a great job, David. You've always been responsible to me, so thank you for that. Um, I, I would say, um, really the biggest perk is to some, trying to attract people to your department is the benefits, right? I mean, the benefits, like you said, I know many people that hold jobs and don't even worry about the salary. It's about the benefits. So, um, I'm sure you market that when you're hiring, right? But, uh, yeah, so, okay, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. And, you know, just to make a final note here, we're gonna, I'll, I'll share the, the notes, uh, of the meeting and, the post agenda and, and, um, the, the presentation and, you know, we, we, we gathered notes on, on everything here and and everything's recorded on the city channel. So I'll share that with the board so that we're fully up to speed on just what's been discussed here. And, uh, with that, I mean, any other further comments before we close out? All right. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Devin. Thank you all members for joining me today. And I thank my, thank my staff for, uh, um, helping me, uh, throughout this post agenda. And with all that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moves, second.
We're adjourned.